Okay, I'm gonna call tonight's meeting to order and just so you know, Council Duggar, we normally forget the council president, so I'm glad you have been replaced. So with that, I'll have the recorder recall the role that we basically just did.
Council Duggar?
Here.
Council Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Here.
Council Hassan?
Here.
Council Kimmy?
Here.
Council Teeter?
Here.
Council Tibnan?
Here.
Mayor Beatty?
Here. I don't know, since we're only via Zoom, if we would even have public testimony. Are people find their gateway to us through Granicus?
No, their invitation is through Zoom and currently no one's called in.
Okay, well, it looks like we have no one here for public testimony, but in case you are, you can raise your hand. Okay, doesn't look like we have anyone here for visitor comment today. Any council items? Council Hassan?
Yeah, hi friends. I had someone from the Muslim community reach out. They're trying to pull off Muslim Heritage Month next month. So they were asking the council to consider a council proclamation. If you guys could help give me a thumbs up to the city manager, I'm happy to coordinate with their office to make it happen. For March.
All right.
Thank you.
Any staff items?
No, mayor.
All right, consent agenda, council president?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Council Duggar. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seen none. Will the recorder call the roll?
Council Duggar?
Yes.
Council Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Council Hassan?
Yes.
Council Kimmy?
Yes.
Council Teeter?
Yes.
Council Tibnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, council president, you have your script.
I do.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to take comment on the findings in Agenda Bill two, three, zero, four, five, that support the city's request to exempt the North Transmission Line Entertight Project from competitive bidding and use the construction manager, general contractor contract process instead. Before we begin, I'll ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate in the public hearing.
Thank you, mayor. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. If you've joined this meeting by phone, you can enter star nine to let the city recorder know that you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you are joining this meeting online, you can let the city recorder know that you wish to speak by clicking the raised hand feature. After each person speaks, council members may ask questions of the speaker. That's all, mayor.
All right, is there a staff presentation?
Hi, this is Brian Barnett. My camera isn't working. There isn't really a staff presentation. The agenda bill is intended to give you the background for the issues, but I can take any questions that you have.
Are there any question for staff? And I recognize this is probably the first time we have done this kind of public hearing for the majority of council. I would let you know this is fairly routine in the projects like this that we've done. I just think it might be the first time as this body. With that, does anyone have any questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none. Sorry, my computer just restarted before this meeting, so there's like a hundred windows open. I will now open the public hearing. City recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak on the proposed exemption?
No, mayor.
Okay, there appears to be no members of the public who wish to comment on this matter this evening. I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I move that the council, acting as the contract review board, adopt the findings in Agenda Bill two, three, zero, four, five, in support of the requested exemption from competitive bidding requirements, and authorize the city to use a construction manager, general contractor contracting process for construction of the North Transmission Line Entertight Project.
Is there a second? Ooh, I don't know who to give that to. Giving it to Council Tibnan. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Council Tibnan?
Yeah, just quickly, the CMGC model is alternative delivery and it's still kind of fairly new. I mean, it's not that, that old, but it allows for a competitive process to look at the qualifications of each of the bidders, not just price. And given the scope of this particular project, that's a really good thing, that we'll get the right team in there. So I was excited to see that this was the decision that was made and I'm happy to support this. Just want to throw that out there for anyone who was wondering what that process was all about.
Yeah, that's a, that's good background, Council Tibnan. I stopped short of actually saying why it was routine, so I appreciate that. But this is something that a lot of governments do because it helps us in these technical projects, gets projects moving faster. Anyone else have any comments, questions? All right, with that, will the recorder call the roll?
Council Duggar?
Yes.
Council Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Council Hassan?
Yes.
Council Kimmy?
Yes.
Council Teeter?
Yes.
Council Tibnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, we are on to our action item of the evening. And remember, when action items come before us, we're expected to vote at the end of them versus we have three work sessions, sorry, two work sessions after the action item. Work sessions are stuff that comes to us early in the process, usually after one-on-ones where we give input. This action item has been before council more than one time, so now it's the time to vote on what's coming ahead of us. With that, I'll turn it over to Sarah King. I'm sure she has a brief presentation.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Hello, mayor and city council. Good evening. I will be as brief as I can because we have brought this item to you a couple of times. Let me share my screen. Okay, can you all see this?
Yep.
Okay, I see. I see nods. Great. Okay, well, very briefly, you all know why we need a disposition policy here for real estate. It's for consistency, it's for transparency, and we want to be sure that we are consistent with state law as well. There are some things that will not be in this, in this policy, like vacations and public access easements because they are covered in other parts of state law that dictates particular processes. Okay, in this policy, who makes decisions? In most cases, the city council makes decisions, and the city council, of course, will make decisions on all substantial real estate decisions. City manager has the authority to approve temporary and permanent easements, but has the option to bring easements to you. As a result of our work session last month, city council requested to review this policy after one year of adoption so that amendments could be made if needed. And the city council, or excuse me, the city manager at that time shall report on the number and types of easements that are administratively approved for disposition. Process, the first part of the process in a, in a real estate disposition is informal or formal discussions with city council. Again, this is pretty, this could be happening informally, or it could be happening like briefings, or it could be more formal when staff schedules an executive session, for example, to begin a discussion about potential disposition. The first really formal step, though, and it's clarified in the, in the policy, is a declaration of surplus. This occurs in a public meeting. It requires findings of surplus. It is exempted, can be exempted, when disposing to another public agency. However, city council could always choose to go through that declaration of surplus if it wanted to. And it directs staff to develop a disposition plan. Should also say that declaration of surplus is actually required in state law. After that, staff would develop a disposition plan. Now, in a really simple disposition where we are selling property to a adjacent property owner, for example, that disposition could be all of three sentences, right, or a paragraph. It could be very brief. But in, in many cases, more substantial properties, it would actually outline for your review and for the public's reviews as well, a, you know, how this, how staff is going to dispose of the property, how they're going to make it available by process and the kind, all of, in addition to all kinds of information about the property itself. Then there's a formal action. This must, in this formal action, city council must make findings that the disposition furthers adopted goals, plans, or priorities. It also requires that city council look at market rate compensation unless in exchange for benefits convert conferred, the value is reduced. In the case of a reduced valuation, however, the city council needs to be thoughtful and make sure that the reduction in value is proportional to the community or city benefit that's expected to be received. I do want to make one correction, ask you to make one correction when you take action tonight. This is an oversight, something I missed and I apologize. In section nine, which is the, the section about easements, originally, and I say originally, before last month's work session, I had a sentence in there that said the city manager will report to council on all city manager approved easements. But I took that out because you have requested that we come back in a year to review this process. And at that time, the city manager will report on any administratively approved easements. So because of that, it doesn't need to be in this section, and I request that you take action to take that out. That's it. Any questions?
I'll go first. Mine, I guess, is if we could take this slide down too, that'd be great.
Yep.
So this is the second time that council is asking for something to return to us. So I'm just asking city manager for the process. We just did it with our transportation policy recommendations last week, asked for them to come back. Where are these going to be kind of stored in the event of you're not here, or some of us aren't here, or you're out sick? Like, how can we track these requests that we're making to make sure they actually come back to the council?
Oh, they should be tracked within the attorney's office. And also, I'm sure CDD would have also a tracking mechanism, but I believe that we'll be able to get them through the attorney's office. And we can also schedule the time in which this is presented to you annually, so you know when it's coming as well.
If the council maybe wants to do this annually, I think we want to have a check-in as the oversight to make sure that it happens the way that we think it's happening. And so I don't know if we need to have like, I mean, I think we need to get to next year and then make that decision as a body, but what, what we're exercising together is this new muscle around oversight. And I think the same with the past one. My hope would be that like not every year we have to come back and monitor routine city manager things, but the fact that this was kind of born from the old form of government, we're having to make these changes based around how the charter had lined things out and, and current operation. I would say like just making sure it comes back. I just want to make sure it's on somebody's work plan. I don't think it's the city attorney. I kind of feel like it'd be yours.
No, it would be tracked through the attorney's office. We work together, but like I said, this would be scheduled a year from now, so you would see it on your future agenda.
Okay. Council Duggar?
Yeah, quick question. I mean, this is a newbie counselor thing. This only applies to the city and not borough. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Last year, Burea adopted its own disposition policy. And then this was coming second, and then once this gets adopted, we will start moving on leases.
Got it. Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. So my question is similar to the question I asked last time is like, we do have a piece in there that, that is city manager's discretion to request council approval. And, and so I think maybe mine's a little bit more of a process follow-up question. I know we had a list of criteria, but I'm curious if the, like, the questions didn't really indicate to me when an easement would come in front of council or not. And then, so I'm curious if there's been any more that you can share around that. And then the second piece is, so presumably, we, we would be presented on the ones then, and then the, the one-year check-in that we're talking about is kind of the role of view of everything. And we'd catch the remainder of those that didn't come before council.
Yes, to answer your second question, yes, anything that doesn't come to you that's administratively approved would, would come to you in a year and let you know what kind of, what kind of easements those were. And then to answer your question, yeah, I don't know if I did a great job of answering your question that you asked last month. I think there's no hard and fast, you know, when we started thinking about are there thresholds that we want to develop that tells the city manager when something should go to the city council versus when it can stay administrative? And the conundrum that we ran into is that easements can take all kinds of forms and hard and fast criteria didn't always necessarily indicate that something should go to you or not. And, and I'm looking at this, for example, things, so, so for example, impact on future use of property. Will the easement interfere with the city's current use or anticipated fu- future use of the property? A lot of these, that's a, a question. A lot of these questions can be answered as yes or no. And if it is sort of a yes answer, maybe it should go to the city council, but there are so many different variables that it, we thought it might work best to just give a list of the kinds of things the city council should be thinking about so that the city council, I mean, sorry, the city manager, excuse me, things that the city manager should be thinking about sort of in totality to help the city manager determine whether it's a big enough item or a visible enough item, or it has the biggest, greatest impacts that it should go to you. But we just had a hard time trying to affix hard and fast benchmarks or criteria, which it got kicked up into the city council. So that's why we have this list of criteria for the city manager to think about, but it, it, it doesn't automatically say when something should or should not go to city council. Does that, does that help? Help you, help you understand at least the intent? Did I describe it very well?
I think so. City manager, I'd love to hear your thoughts, too.
I think this really boils down to the council having a little bit of trust in your city manager to have the discretion to determine what gets to you and what doesn't, based on the policy, which really is providing some like bookends in terms of general guidance. And I think, you know what, maybe, you know, I'm more than happy to, while it doesn't spell it out in the policy, I'm more than happy to provide you regular updates on things that I keep at administrative level to do check-ins informally. But I think at this point, this is really your discretion to, to try this. And like the mayor mentioned earlier, we have a check-in, we determine what's working, what not. So maybe look at this as a little bit of a pilot. Because like Sarah said, you know, some things, you know, it's kind of a little bit of an art versus a science sometimes. If you want to talk about easement, so I think that's what Sarah's trying to, try to share with you. That's my two cents. It's really, but council's got to be comfortable with this bottom line.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. For me, I just kind of needed to understand like the, the, the goal of this is, you know, however many months ago that we talked about it, there was a little uncomfortable, you know, feeling of saying just all easements could be done without council, you know, consent or whatever. So I know that this is in response to that, and I think what I'm hearing today and what I am comfortable with is that the goal is to provide some guidance for considerations when looking at an easement and really providing that flexibility to you, Jenny, as a city manager, to use that discretion and come to council when you need more input to make the decision. So that, that is helpful for me to round out my knowledge. Thank you.
I think it's also important to know that this policy started forming before the change of government out of response to the previous mayor trying to purchase a piece of property way over the purchasing limit that council would allow. So we immediately reduced the, the amount of money that he could go and, and buy property from. And when we realized we did that, we, we were thinking about only purchasing. We weren't thinking about what, what happened about selling. So this is a probably almost five-year-old process that's coming to fruition now. The thing that is changing now is who we're giving authority to, and that's why I think it's important, why I was probably one of the leading voices and know the city manager shouldn't have this discretion based off of my experience as a city councillor in a strong mayor form of government. But I do think this check-in piece gives us that kind of accountability and oversight. So sometimes the history of why we do things matter, but this is also a very long, long runway to a problem that existed when South Cooper Mountain was first coming to fruition before the high school was built. Council Hassan?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I was going to say we've come a long way from the last few times we've seen this policy. It's nice to see these policies start to come in front of us and at least for me to know that I got to touch several pieces of it. Can you imagine that we didn't have a policy around this or whatever it was, maybe wasn't reflective of the values of this council? So just kudos to Sarah and staff and anyone who's worked on helping get this forward and trying to ensure that our voices are heard in this document. I think it's a, a good first step in the direction as we continue down this path. So that was it.
Okay, with that, council president, we have a motion?
Yes, mayor. I move that we approve Resolution four, eight, two, eight, removing the line from section nine, just making sure I get my numbers right. Removing the line from section nine that reads, "The city manager will report to council on all city manager approved easements."
Second.
As we moved and seconded by Council Hassan, any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Council Duggar?
Yes.
Council Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Council Hassan?
Yes.
Council Kimmy?
Yes.
Council Teeter?
Yes.
Council Tibnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, all right, we're on to our two work sessions tonight where we'll be able to give input. Well, the first work session is more of an education series that was born out of the idea that council really needed to kind of get on the same page when it came, comes to housing. I think we've identified other areas in which this council is going to be learning together, kind of from the ground up, given kind of where, where we can put things in the agenda. It's a work session, but it's meant to be more of an information session as we kind of move along. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Javier.
Thank you, Mary Bailey. Good morning, council. And actually, this is a work session as we are bringing together two bodies of work together to actually to get feedback from council as we prepare to take this item to the community for, for, through our community engagement for additional feedback before we bring it back as a plan for our housing strategies later in April. And so my name is Javier Mena. I am the actual housing manager out of the community development department. And with me is Jenna Hughes, who is in our planning division, and both of us will be doing this presentation. We have a PowerPoint. Jenna, would you mind bringing the PowerPoint? That way you'll be able to go with it once we're done. So as I mentioned, this is two bodies of work coming together. One is the House and Talk Series. And if we could go to the next slide. Thank you. And this has been a series of conversations that we've had since last year. It's been almost a year where we talked about homeownership, development of affordable housing homelessness, development. And so there's some things that we've heard from the presentation, some, some of the feedback that we've heard from you and also from the community as we engage the community in these conversations as well. And so this is kind of the, bringing together all of those conversations into one as we prepare to create our action plan, not only for our five-year action plan, but also as a requirement by the state through House Bill two thousand and three, which requires the city to create a housing, housing production strategy to meet the housing needs. And so to that, if you can turn it to the next slide, the other project that has been working in parallel, informing each other as we've gone through this, is the Housing Beaverton Project. And again, I will turn it over to Jenna, who would be able to tell us kind of how that project has been going along.
Yes, thanks Javier. So the purpose of the Housing Beaverton Project is to, as Javier mentioned, plan for Beaverton's future housing for the next 20 years and identify strategies to ensure we're meeting everyone's housing needs as well as address current disparities. And the, the project has two major parts, which are both required by state law. And we're also required to do this work every six years. The first phase, the housing needs analysis, assesses current and future housing needs by looking at demographics, future population growth, and how much housing and land we have. The second phase of the project, the housing production strategy, is where we are now. And informed by the housing needs analysis, the production strategy identifies which, which steps the city will take to provide needed housing. And we also share, will be sharing this document with the state, who will be monitoring our progress on this. And community engagement has also been a really crucial part of this work to understand people's needs and get input on the housing strategies. Our focus has really been to engage with historically excluded and marginalized groups, including people who identify as having a disability, seniors, youth, renters, people of color, immigrants, and refugees. So tonight, we'd like to get your feedback on these draft housing strategies. The questions we'll be discussing later are, if you have any questions or comments on the draft potential housing strategies. And two, considering that the state requires the city to have strategies that address all unmet needs, are there any that should be modified, added, or removed from the list? Are there any that are higher priority? And are there any that need further study? So getting into what, an overview of the housing needs analysis, we use Metro's population growth forecast as a basis for the housing needs projection. And by the year 2042, we expect there will be nineteen thousand more people in Beaverton. And assuming an average household size of two or three people, that means we'll need about nine thousand, nine hundred more homes to accommodate this growth. South Cooper Mountain will eventually have more than, than three thousand units, once fully developed. And we're also currently planning for Cooper Mountain, which has more than four hundred acres of developable land and will allow for five thousand new homes. Inside the rest of the city, we only have about forty acres of vacant land for housing. But that being said, we do have a lot of redevelopment potential within the city, including in mixed-use districts and also in residential neighborhoods where we might see some additional housing because of the adoption of the Housing Options Project, which allows for more housing variety. And while the total land capacity is sufficient to accommodate the future housing units, this doesn't mean that the market will necessarily deliver the types of housing that meets everyone's needs. So we will need, intervention will be needed to ensure we serve historically underserved groups especially. We estimate that in 2042, thirty-five percent of new households will be very or extremely low income. And low-income households currently experience severe shortages in housing. The greatest unmet need is for those making less than thirty-five thousand dollars per year. Since 2010, the average cost of rent has nearly doubled. And there is currently a need for more ownership housing at lower price points. The median sale price of homes sold last year was five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which is not affordable to most households in Beaverton. And neighborhoods that are most vulnerable to And neighborhoods that are most vulnerable to gentrification and displacement also largely correspond with areas with greater numbers of people of color and households with lower incomes, such as in the central and southeastern parts of the city. Beaverton is also becoming more racially diverse. The fastest-growing communities of color are people who identify as Asian, Hispanic or Latina, and as two or more races. Communities of color have disproportionately unmet housing needs and limited housing choice due to a history of systemic racism. And large and multi-generational households are more common in communities of color compared to white households. Larger households may need bigger homes or specific housing types that can serve a greater number of people. Households of color are also less likely to own their homes compared to white households. Latina and Native American homeownership rates are the lowest of all racial and ethnic groups in Beaverton. Black homeownership is also low. And seniors and people with disabilities are another underserved group. An estimated twelve percent of the population currently report having some sort of disability. And a similar share of the twenty forty-two population would indicate roughly fourteen thousand residents with a disability. But this could be even higher, just given our aging population, since approximately a third of our seniors also identify as having a disability. We don't currently have data on how many accessible units exist in the city, but we know from engagement that there's a significant shortage. And we'll need to include some strategies to produce more housing that serve these populations. We have a lot of existing projects and programs that help address these housing needs at the city. There is some information on this included in your packet. Your packet also includes a list of draft potential housing strategies for the city to implement in the future. These strategies are organized according to the State Department Land, Department of Land Conservation and Development's list of housing strategies. For categories A and B, we've identified some potential strategies to allow or encourage different housing types as well as remove barriers to development. Category C is financial incentives. These are things like system development charge, SDC reductions or exemptions, which the city has limited control over. So for this particular category, we didn't identify any specific strategies. For category D, we've identified a couple potential strategies, which can be used as sources for affordable housing. For category E, we've included multiple-unit property tax exemption as a potential strategy, which is a tool to encourage more multi-unit development. For category F, a potential strategy is to establish more public-private partnerships with home builders to increase the stock of affordable homeownership options. And for category Z, one strategy we've identified is increasing engagement and relationship building with community groups. We've also received some feedback on potential house housing strategies from the Housing Technical Advisory Group, BCCI, Planning Commission, the Inclusive Housing Cohort, and the general public. In terms of community priorities, key themes include micro shelters and pods, renter protections and rent control, more education around housing, more homes for large or multi-generational households, as well as more homeownership opportunities. Preserving existing low-cost housing such as manufactured dwelling parks, accessible and senior housing, partnering with builders, especially in the nonprofit sector, and focusing more housing near transit and services. During council one-on-ones, some of the key themes we heard include making ADUs and middle housing easier to build, allowing single-room occupancy SROs, flexible regulations for affordable housing, allowing more low-cost housing types, renter protections such which which could mean rental assistance or improving conditions for renters, accessible design and aging in place, homeownership opportunities, Housing Development Fund, which involves ongoing investment into a fund dedicated for affordable housing, and construction excise tax on construction projects that can be used to fund affordable housing. So from now through spring, we're going to be focusing on conducting more engagement on the potential housing strategies, including engaging with developers and housing producers. We have a Planning Commission work session on the revised housing strategies scheduled for April fifth. And then later in April, we plan to come back to you all with a timeline for implementing these strategies. And we'll then be sharing this list with the state in May. And then come back for public hearings to adopt both the housing needs analysis and housing production strategy, tentatively June fourteenth for Planning Commission and August fifteenth for council. So that concludes staff presentation. The questions for discussion are, do you have any questions or comments on the draft potential housing strategies? And considering that the state requires the city to have strategies that address all unmet needs, are there any that should be modified, added, or removed? Are there any that are higher priority? And are there any that you would like us to study further? Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for the presentation. And this is incredibly important work, not only because it's a state mandate, but there's bills working through the legislature right now on consequences for not meeting some of these housing goals. So it's important for council to have realistic goals and how we're going to accomplish this. But still including some stretch goals in there. And so it's important that we're we're going to be held accountable for this list through a very mechanism the state legislature is currently deciding, which has taken a lot of work from the government relations team to make sure that we're not penalized and hit for housing, not building housing out of our own control. I'll tell you, when I look at this, you know, my husband and I lived in Germany. We lived off in the market, which is a military term for not on post. And we lived in what would be probably considered a multi-generational household that looked more like an ADU. And so I do think some of these things can be accomplished in multiple areas. I think this is also an area where our our priorities might clash with other things. To build very large multifamily housing goes directly in the face of House Bill two thousand and one and missing middle housing, because the square footage required to build some of these housing would be astronomically large. We used to consider this type of housing more or less like executive housing because it was so big. And so I'm interested in the in the strategy of how to get there, because there's not a lot of lots in Beaverton that could accommodate a very large multifamily house. Maybe downtown Beaverton has some of the biggest lots in the entire city. That neighborhood is is probably the most prime for turnover and infill. And so what does that look like when we're trying to accomplish these things? But it could also be met through strategies of ADUs where you could have your parents or a person move on with you. The where I don't see a lot of clarity, and again, this is a little bit hard considering fifty percent of our households live in multifamily housing here. We don't have a lot of strategies beyond more multifamily housing. But one of the things that I I have always felt is missing is housing for students. As we, as a state prioritize community colleges and to go, having people have the opportunity to maybe not live with their family and live in a more dormitory-style housing where, you know, maybe there's a shared kitchen and smaller rooms. We almost had that in the downtown core prior to COVID happening that we didn't get off the ground in the Bira district. But looking at housing like that, I also think we know a lot about what renters look like here. We don't know a lot about what homeowners look like here. And then really asking the question of seniors, it is a huge growing population where they're living in a lot of downtown Beaverton houses because they're one-story. And they're not, they own them outright, so they're not really moving. So what does the spectrum of our housing look like? Are there people living in housing that people can move up into? I'll tell you from living in downtown Beaverton, there was a lot of single women living in four and five-bedroom houses in downtown Beaverton. So what is our strategy for looking at what the current, what people actually look like in the houses now? As part of the like strategy of where we need to build, like if there's a bunch of seniors living in four or five-bedroom housing, to me, it would annotate, we need to have housing for seniors. And then we can move a population into this housing. So I'm I'm interested in housing as a spectrum, I guess, and really understanding what our our owners in the city currently look like. Councillor Duggar?
Yeah, but a comment and a couple of questions, and then I'll give you my priorities. Completely agree with you, Mayor, on all the points you made. I will say this, one thing that concerns me, and I think this is part of the overall housing market in the metro, is as we move renters or create programs and incentives to move renters to ownership. I I'd really like to figure out how we focus on existing Beaverton residents and not serving the Portland metro area. You know, with programs. And I don't know how, if we could even do that, right? But I know I've been in the housing market myself, you know, you, a a lot of people would jump at an ownership opportunity that aren't current Beaverton residents, you know, to live here. And and I just want to make sure that we're thinking about, you know, that's an important part of the strategy to me is like, as we move the model or or help, our model helps to move renters to owners. How do we prioritize existing Beaverton residents and families in that? Question for you, I saw on this slide that the average, I think, was five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars now, something like that, something really high. When when I think about rules and regulations, like, how do we, how do we make this work, right? Like, like, how many units? Because if I buy a house and just tear it down and build even our missing middle, right? That's a priority for us, but like, are our rules actually setting us up for success? If I if I buy a five hundred and eighteen thousand dollar house and I'm able to build four units there, you know, that's that's almost, you know, a hundred and something thousand dollars per unit just to knock it an existing house down. And so like, like, I want us to get really aggressive and think about the actual market and figure out like, are we being aggressive enough on the units to actually get middle housing built? Because I I haven't seen it done very successfully in a lot of places. I'm hopeful, obviously, for it to be here, but I I think about that. So my questions. I know there was some recent work in central Beaverton, particularly around the transit areas on change, changing the zoning and and whatnot. Was that aggressive enough? And the reason I ask that is I'm seeing four and five-story buildings in every city in America. So I don't even want to give us credit for for getting those built. Like, like, I know that there's up to a hundred and ten feet, I believe, in some areas in the transit zone. Like, is that enough? Is that actually a aggressive enough? Because I know, like, once you hit a certain height, I was talking to some developers. You've got to build a lot of infrastructure, like elevators and and all this stuff. And then it becomes really cost prohibitive. And so you actually kind of need to go taller than that to make it pencil out. And so my question is, number one, are we seeing actual changes yet? It might be too early from all that work. Are we seeing positive housing that maybe wouldn't have happened prior to that? Or should we get more aggressive? And number two, what are the effect of short-term rentals on our rental market here in Beaverton? I've I've posed this a couple of times, and I think I don't think any of us know the answer to that, but I would be curious to to know both as a a a data point and a potential source of regulation for revenue that we could put into a fund. I don't know what the answer is that. So those are my two questions. My priorities would be A, B, C, and F, which are the zoning and code changes, the regulatory impediments, reducing those. I think those two are going to be our biggest possible things. Financial incentives, I think, are going to be great. And then land acquisition and lease and partnerships. I think about proud ground and a number of other things that have already been successful. I think we need to expand those as much as possible. One thing I've consistently hear from developers and folks in the housing market is land is the one of the biggest drivers of cost. And if we can figure that part out through partnerships, I think that would be a really, really helpful strategy for us. So I I just dumped a lot on your plate.
Thank you, councillor Duggar. And just a couple of points. One is in terms of the opportunities for homeowners in Beaverton. The two programs that we do have require that the residents be from Beaverton in order for them to to be able to benefit from those those programs. In terms of the zoning changes that have happened in the downtown area, I think it's I'm not a planner, I will, for for disclosure, but I think it's a little early for for us to see exactly what the outcome is, you know. At the same time, interest rates went up, the cost of construction have gone up. And so I think it's difficult to tell whether that has helped or not in terms of what can happen in that area. And in terms of effects of short-term rentals, we don't know. The city, there's no, nothing in regard to short-term rentals in the cities. Codes, so it is not being tracked or regulated or anything like that. So it's, we don't, we do not know.
But don't we collect TLT from short-term rentals? So wouldn't we have some degree of knowing? And when I pull up Airbnb, it's mostly single-room occupancy.
I honestly, no, no, that's something that we'll check.
Okay.
Can I weigh in here really quick on the short-term rentals? So Echo Northwest did a study back in like twenty sixteen, I think, up in Seattle in the Queen Anne area. They were concerned about that. And they found that in really, really touristy areas like beach locations and downtowns and really high-desirable cities like New York and things like that. Short-term rentals have a very big impact on housing market and the availability. But in smaller communities, property owners actually have a better return on their investment with the long-term rentals because they just can't get enough repeat people to to fill up their short terms in the smaller cities. So I think given that Beaverton is a place where people come to visit family, yes, they they're coming to visit the research, they're coming here for work. There's probably not the level of tourism that is going to displace a lot of long-term rental stock, except for maybe in very, very specific locations of town. It's just a guess, but I'll I'll dig up that reporting sent it to you because the findings are really interesting.
Yeah, I'd be curious. And I know the city managers, there's there's some state data that might be coming online over the next year or so. But I also think about you know, the example of our work on the 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 dog and cat ordinance, right? Like, like, the reason that was so easy is because it doesn't affect a lot right now. And, you know, you're kind of preventing that sort of thing from becoming a problem. And I do think about that in terms of short-term rentals. I don't know that it's something we imminently have to fix, but it is something, depending on what the data shows, once we get it from the state. If we're able to get it from the state, I should say, that might be something we want to look at. If it is, you know, causing some harm in the market, but that's something we can talk about a future date. But thanks, thanks, councillor Tibnon.
Yeah, and I do think we could look up that, have finance team look up TLT because council had a robust conversation when we were doing TLT years ago about short-term rentals. The other thing that happened a few years ago that we should consider as part of this strategy with short-term rentals, there was a lot of seniors that came to us and asked us to make it easier for them to have. You, we're calling it SROs here, but in reality, it's like another listing on Airbnb, so they could afford to stay in their house. Like, their spouse died, they lost their income. Renting a room on a short-term basis could make it so they could stay in their home. So when we're digging into that data, sometimes the unintended consequence of what we're doing. So I think starting to get councillor Duggar the TLT information would, I think, at least start helping this conversation. Okay, councillor.
Yeah, thank you. Jenna and Javier, really great work on this. I'm really excited about the strategies that are coming out of the work. I'm going to share a little bit that I already shared with staff, but I want to make sure council has the chance to hear it too. But first, a couple of comments in response to councillor Duggar here. There is an article, a research article that came out from the Sightline Institute a few months ago about housing policy changes in Portland. And what's the impact on affordability? And one of the, one of the conclusions is there's not always the immediate impact, like, we're not gonna see a house add or get purchased and then add an ADU immediately or get demolished and become a multiplex, because it is cost prohibitive. But eventually, like, and unfortunately also, as housing prices continue to rise, there's that pressure, at least. As housing prices continue to rise, there's that pressure release valve where eventually it does become. Um, cost effective. I say unfortunately because that means the cost continues to rise in the meantime, but it is a pressure release valve that kind of opens up. And flattens the curve a little bit in the future. Um. For short term rentals, I'm interested in that too. Um. Not sure how high of a priority it is at the moment compared to some of these other. Um, policy strategies, strategies we have here. Um, I'm from Asheville, North Carolina, and and Asheville, we actually. Had a very long conversation about short term rentals there, and one of the policies we put forth or. The city put forth. Was you can have short term rentals, but they have to be owner occupied. And I think that helped out with. Um, elderly or people on lower incomes who just needed some extra support. Uh, but it also cut out like, hey, we're renting out this whole house for short term rentals when it could be somebody's actual home here. Um, so there are some strategies I think we could work with that could be interesting to explore. And then. Lastly, for strategies here in the document. I found myself really really leaning towards. Um. Categories A and B, and that was zoning and. Um. Regulation, I think. Um. Every regulation that we put on housing, whether it's. Parking or design requirements or. Um, like open space. Is added cost for the actual price of a unit. Um, so I'm in favor of like eliminating height minimums or um increasing. Floor area ratios. I think as we work on our tree code, we can make sure that there's. Um, space for trees or open space, but I think in the in the meantime, like making sure we can build bigger buildings if we need to. Um. Or taller buildings. Um, we should be able to do that. Uh, floor area ratio, like the ratio can be really high. But the building can still be very, very narrow, it'd just be taller, and that just means there's more square footage. But there'd still be open space. I think you get some really unique buildings that way and give. Developers some more flexibility to actually build what they want to build. Um. And then I was also really intrigued. And Steph, I didn't talk about this with you because I didn't think about it then. But the construction excise taxes. Um. Heard a lot on planning commission, I feel like. We hear a lot these days about the market won't provide this, the market won't provide this type of housing, even though it's what we need. And we don't have very many tools to actually. Force the provision of what we actually want. And I feel like construction excise taxes might be a way to do that. If we want. More affordable housing, but all we're getting is the five hundred and twenty thousand dollar market rate, single family homes. Like, I'd be in, I'd be supportive, at least as of this moment. Um, before I learn more about putting a a construction excise tax on the single family homes and using that to fund more affordable units. Of different sizes. I think it just opened up some options for us and maybe cut down on the supply of. Of of single family homes. Maybe that's not the right terminology of cut down the supply, but. Kind of correct the market a little bit and give us some more options. I would love to learn more about it. I don't feel like I know that much about it right now, but I'd love to learn more, and I think we got some great strategies here, but. Yeah, A A and B for zoning and regulations are. Pretty exciting for me.
All right, let's get Counselor Teeter like an ASAP class on construction excise tax. So he doesn't think out loud about reducing middle housing supply and have the home developers calling us next month. Um, but it would be, um, it's been probably seven or eight years since we've talked about construction excise taxes in council. So I do think it's. Uh, a worthy conversation for us to to come back to and and have a education series because. It solves one problem and and creates more expensive housing than another. I I have changed my opinion over the years on that, so it'd be interesting to see where the market is and and get a study on that. And can someone elevate Lee Crabtree? I'm not sure if she was raising her hand because she wanted to talk, or I'm guessing she's here as a department head, so. Either way, can someone move her over? That would be great. Uh, Council President?
Thank you. Um, Jenna, I have a couple kind of clarifying conver- or questions for you. Um. Uh, one is like the definition of single room occupancy is is that like someone just subletting a room in their home? Or is that like a specific type of um thing that's built?
Yeah, thanks for that question. Um, it is kind, it is more of a specific housing type. Um, where. There are. Um, smaller units um with maybe a bed and some basic. Um, amenities, and then there's more of a larger common space kitchen area that's shared. Um, so kind of like dorms?
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then the second one I was curious about, so. In number two, where it says the state requires a city to have strategies to address all unmet needs. Is the unmet need that we're talking about that nine thousand nine hundred housing units that we need in twenty years? Or is there some other set of needs that we should be thinking about?
Um, the other, the un, the other unmet needs are the um. Uh, needs for a uh lower income populations, um, communities of color, um. Persons with disabilities and seniors, um, as they are experiencing more disproportionate housing needs.
Effects. Okay, okay. Thank you, Jenna. That was really helpful. Um, because those are also the ones that I wrote down as the areas that I think are the higher priority for us is to really make sure that. The people who have, um, you know, had unmet housing needs who've been disproportionately, you know, essentially discriminated against. Because of the way that the housing market has been, those would be my higher priority areas for us to. Um, be keeping an eye on, and I think that um all of the techniques are really interesting to me, so it's not particularly helpful. Because I think it is going to take a variety of them, but I would agree that like zoning and code changes and some of that regulatory. Um, uh, stuff that's identified in in B are really important to just kind of make it easier to. Build lots of housing that meets lots of needs. Um, you know. Keeping people housed and getting people housed is. To me, the biggest priority. Um, so I do think I would agree with Counsel Teeter in terms of categories A and B. Maybe being areas that can help us, um. Also, um, in terms of specific ones, I have shared my supportive A D U's in the past, but I do think that, you know, there's. A lot of kind of private funding that that has, you know, is needed, right? It's the individual homeowner who might be able to do that, so. Um, I I think for us to have our code, um. And reducing regulatory, um, like impediments. To just make it easier for people to choose that, I think, is a really important thing. So like, where can private. Uh, sector help fill some gaps and, you know, so I think that's kind of the approach that I take is I I want us to make sure that it's easy for people to meet a need. Where they are able to, um, because we have so much unmet need. In our community.
Counsel Tivnun?
Okay, um, so I'll go down the list, uh, from one to the bottom bullet, starting with the top one. Um. I think that there's one that we should potentially add to the list. From the the D L C D's, um. More filled out description of all of these potential strategies, and that's A twenty four. Which is legalized alternative housing types on wheels. Um, and this gets me to. Uh, also answering to the bullet, the second bullet, which is um any that are a higher priority. So. To me, it's um, it's not just about removing barriers to getting things built. It's the fact that building things is so expensive right now. And there's a lot of innovations that are happening, both in modular homes and mobile homes, tiny homes. And, um. Trying to allow for more flexibility for those housing types to come into more areas of the city, I think is worth. Examining, um, that also in terms of higher priority, I think that. Uh, looking at manufactured housing preservation zones is really important. As well as potential set of sites around Cooper Mountain. I know that. Uh, one of the things around manufactured home land is that the land ends up becoming more valuable over time. And over time, the things that are sitting on it aren't as valuable, and that can become a problem. Many years down the road. Um, I know that there's communities like in California where they built out huge um mobile home parks. And now there's kind of tensions between wanting to develop that land because it's prized. And um folks that live there and feel a connection to that land, even if they don't actually own the land that's underneath their mobile home. Um, but I I do think that we're in a state of emergency and it's something that, um. We we should explore fully because the uh, the likelihood of of being able to get that kind of housing in. Seems like we could get purchased there, we could get some actually in quicker than. Um, some of the brick and mortar stuff that has to get built. Um, so the other two things in the higher priority section that I was really excited about. Were in category F, permit ready plan sets. For um, missing middle and for A D U's. And I know that this kind of, if you, if you think a lot about it, it's like you think tiki taki homes of every home looking exactly the same. Very post World War Two and the housing boom that happened. Um, I think if we, if we do that, though, we could be really, really helping developers to get going and, um. That that was really exciting to me. And if you read the description of it on D L C D, um, the idea of getting, um. Uh, design competitions going, getting universities involved and helping to think through what. The plans could look like would mean that we would streamline the process in a way that wouldn't have to be subsidized, and that that's really exciting to me as well. Um, and then as far as one that I think needs further study. Uh, anything in category E. I I, the idea of messing with our ability to collect on property taxes really. Concerns me and I'm starting to see. I feedback coming in from um special districts. Uh, like Ben, Park and Rec had mentioned that that, you know, they waived fees to try and help with affordable housing. But now they're they're in a big crunch because. Uh, meeting level of service is something that they're they're worried about where that money is going to come from. It's a small example. But as we're starting to mess with our ability to collect on our property taxes down the road. Uh, I I see that being something that could come back to haunt. Us in a big way. Um, so as much as we can avoid doing that while also creating a a really attractive environment. For housing of all sorts um to get built is the method that I would prefer to explore the most. That's what I got for you.
Well, I think you get the award for getting a rock lyric into your uh statement tonight with, from a Pete Seagar song on uh little tiny houses, so. Give you that award tonight for that one. Hopefully everyone else caught that as well. There, Kimmy.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation for sure. I. I do agree almost hundred percent with Counselor Tivnun's suggestions, um. And she took the words out of my mouth, so, um. Um, one thing that I want to make uh say is, um, I shared with this with many. Of you guys before is that. Uh. In Korea and Asian countries or ho- or high population. Um. Uh, cities, uh, they're moving away from multi generational homes. Because uh, uh, as they make more money and they're have financial security. The the parents do not want to live with their kids and kids do not want to live with their parents. And we have a lot of younger generations who doesn't want to get married and they just want to live single, enjoy their life. So there's such a severe shortage of single units everywhere. Um, and we have a limited land. As a city, I see that we have less than forty acres, is that? Um, in within the city and only fully possible growth is South Cooper Mountain. So, um, I'll I would really focus more on single units, studio units, shared housing. Because that's the future, that's the demand for the future. And also, um. Regards to South Cooper Mountain or anywhere, do we have, um. Goal or vision as a city to build like the downtown Portland or New York? High-rise condo units, or is that something we're trying to avoid? Or is, or are we? Uh, or are they just not coming to the city for development? That's just general question. That I have with the maybe mayor and other people. That are we seeking them to come in or are we? Well, maybe somebody can answer that, or or is there just no interest in the developers trying to come into the city and? Build uh high dense, high rise buildings?
I think it's Cheryl with us because she might be the staff member. To talk about this, because we we talked a lot about it during, when we were making rezoning rules about like. What what could we actually zone to people build? Because we could zone it a lot of ways, but there might not be interest. So I think Cheryl might be the right person to. Answer that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors, Cheryl Tweedy, Community Development Director. Couple of thoughts for you on that. Um, South Cooper Mountain zoning is actually pretty uh flexible and that it. Enables a wide variety of housing types to be built. We know that it's a challenge to get the market to create a condominium homeownership product because of Oregon's liability laws. Uh, original developers and contractors are essentially responsible for the performance of a building for ten years after it's completed. And that's longer than a lot of other states. Um, there've been many cases in our metro area where projects have not uh done well, they've had construction. Issues and the liability stays with the original developer for an extended period of time. So developers are really reluctant to build that product. Which is quite unfortunate because it's a great way of creating more missing middle housing. As well as giving people more more housing choice. So that's my comments on condominiums are really, um. Statewide, not just in South Cooper Mountain or downtown Beaverton.
Oh. Then. If if the if it's a statewide uh code issue, then, but there's so many uh new condominiums going up in the Portland area. Are they just more attractive than Beaverton? Is that why?
Um, actually, there's very little condominium development happening in Portland. Um, back in the two thousands, there was a a big, uh. Uh, a a number of buildings were delivered to the market and the Great Recession hit, so there. Sig- significant financial implications of that. And some of these liabilities issues really came into the forefront, so. Um, almost all of the housing in downtown Central City Portland is is apartments. It's not, it's not condominiums. There are a few scattered condominium projects here and there, but. Largely, it's a product type that the development industry is shying away from at this point in time. And there have been efforts in the past, and the mayor might be able to speak to this better than I can regarding uh efforts to work with the legislature. Try to change that liability law, which I I think unless the market is so hot. Um, it's gonna, the 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 law will prevent uh prevent uh a lot of condominiums being used, built in Oregon.
God, have I tried, Counselor Kimmy, for probably four sessions in a row, uh, to get someone to pick up that bill. Um, I think given. Good, good night, my love. Um. Uh, given the crisis we're in, it might be a time to go back. I mean, obviously, we can't get it done this session, the bill, they'll drop deadline is here. Uh, but it's something for the council to consider in the future because. There was at one point a white sheet because I used to hammer this so often with staff, so me, I'll look through my emails tomorrow and see if I could find out. Uh, we had created a white sheet on kind of given the problems, but I think Counselor Kimmy's other question was. Uh, stories like, you know, we're only building, you know, three to five stories. Is it something we're doing that is stopping it or is it market driven?
I think it's largely market driven. Uh, and in Beaverton, we have a couple of factors that are a little different than in Portland. We have a really high water table in in downtown Beaverton in particular, so it's very expensive to build below grade parking. And most developers will size their project based on what they think the housing, the parking need will be within their project. And then how much they can fit on site. Um, there are very few areas outside of Portland Central City where you have, where we've seen. Ten, twelve, fifteen story um housing towers in our in our region. The five to six story building is really kind of an economic sweet spot where it's most feasible to to be, um. Uh, building that that number of floors. And that actually delivers a fair amount of density for us, particularly if you've underground parking and not surface level parking.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Happy to talk further uh on this one. This is interesting. Thank you.
Counsel Hassan?
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. Really good dialogue. I wish. We had more time, like, I want to hear more about what some of the counselors are saying about like category E or category F. And category D, but in the absence of that, I'll just share a little bit of my input. Um. Super supportive of a lot of the strategies in A. Um, when Counselor Kimmy was sharing. Uh, his experience uh with communities in Korea specifically, I like paused for a second because I was like, we all live together, right? So it made me think about. So it made me think about, you know, just styles and like. And what is the definition of like a multi generational home? Um, and then I was reading the single resource occupancy definition again and I was like, okay, this is kind of the same, right? Because like, um, I would have my family live with me in our house if they wanted to live with me. They don't. Um, but like it'd be just good to have a different bathroom or something. And so like identifying like what the needs. Of the communities, which you're doing a good job at community engagement, like what are they saying that they want to see? Because I think there's this like. There's this word that we use, which is multi generational housing, and I don't know what that actually means. And maybe let me pause, like, do you have like a specific definition, Jenna, that is like multi generational housing is this?
I don't have a specific definition for multi generational housing. I think it can take can take lots of different shapes. And that's something we heard from community. It's like sometimes it is a home with more bedrooms. For certain communities or that want to live together and under the same roof. And then sometimes it's more like an ADU, so there's a little bit more separation. And sometimes it's like not even necessarily in on the same lot, but. Um, you know, more mixed, more housing types within the same neighborhood. So maybe. Parents can live next door or down the street on the same block.
Okay, it just, it's one of those things where, you know, I I don't profess to be an expert on this, but what I hear from communities is this idea that several people want to be able to live together or live near each other. And then this idea that that the ADU conversation that we've been having, right, which is like, I want to be able to build. So I think. A lot of what I'm seeing here is like in the direction of what I want to see. I'd love to like dig in more around like. What does it look like to do category D councillor technology and count, you know, comments about count, you know, category E um. Councillor Dogger made some comments about category F, like all really good topics. I don't know that this is like the forum for them, but. I I I just want to close with, I've seen some of the engagement with communities around this and I just, it's been so amazing to see. Y'all out in the different community groups. I know you partner with like H tag and like there's a unite program and and so I. I feel really um excited to see where your engagement is. With the community to hear so that we can build strategies in that way. So I'm super, super thankful for that. I think my priority, like most of the councillors here is to ensure that we're building as much housing as is possible and is as affordable as possible. So. Thank you for your work.
I think too uh listening to councillor Hassan, because her and I have had had similar conversations with. Our aging parents and having young kids and and kind of the necessity of where we are trying to take care of multiple generations. I wonder if we need to ask a secondary question around like i- if cost wasn't the barrier, what kind of housing would you want? Because to councillor Kimmy's point, um, cost has been a driving factor for a lot of families living together under the same roof for necessity. For us to build that kind of housing would be astronomically expensive. And so. Is that really what you're looking for? Are you looking for, you know, your mom to live three houses down to come over and help or so you could go by? So I think on that kind of multifamily, when I read through the packet, like we need to sometimes ask a secondary question to help us kind of quantify the data a little bit. I mean, I've been trying to get my mom to move in with me and she will not. So come similar to councillor Hussin. We both want it. We have young kids. We want to manage it at the same house. Our parents absolutely will not do it. My mom would love to live next door in her own space. So I think asking that second level question would be important too. Uh, but I might feel differently when I have teenagers. So right now I feel underwater with young kids. Uh, councillor Teeter.
Okay, thanks. Uh Javier, this might be a question for you. If you don't know, it might be a question for Cheryl. But about three years ago, the Community Development Department received a presentation or report that talked about. The the cost of construction for market rate housing and it and it showed a chart of. Like for up to five stories, the cost starts going up. Um, but then once it hits six or seven, it has a huge spike because the change in materials. Changes so much. Do you remember that presentation? And if you do, is there a way that we can get it to look at it?
Uh, I I don't know about the presentation, but I knew about the cost and maybe uh director. Uh, tweet can talk about that. Uh, but I I I know about the cost and how, once you get to a. The story level for for, you know, four over one, five over one. Once you go beyond that, it really it spikes up the cost. So you really have to go higher.
Excuse me, excuse me. You're absolutely right, councillor Teeter. I am racking my memory, trying to remember where that data came from, but. We could probably pull it from um some different sources.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it came to us when we were doing the the downtown redevelopment code. That's when I think it came to council.
That's right.
Yeah, we'll check with um Brian Martin, who is and and Steve Renger, who are the project managers on that and see what we can pull together.
Okay, I would love to see it. Thank you.
All right, Javier, you got seven different opinions about the seven different directions. We want you to go solve this problem. So. Uh, hopefully you and uh Jenna have uh some marching orders. Is there anything else you need from the council?
I I greatly appreciate uh all the work you do and the feedback that we received and uh that's why Jen is here so she can help us through that whole process. Uh, and then we'll definitely come back. Uh, so thank you so much. He was very, very helpful. I know that is a challenging work and it's many times they're competing. Um, things are happening. So I greatly appreciate your support and your work.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to our second work session of the evening, Agenda Bill two, three, zero, four, eight, a Community Development Department Planning Division. Transportation Division Work Program Review. And if you know what that is, you are probably a city councillor. Go ahead.
Good evening, um, Mayor and councillors. I'm Anna Slatinsky, Plan Division Manager in the Community Development Department. I'm joined by Jean Zanishel Biggs, the Transportation Planning Division Manager in CDD, and also Sambo Kirkman, Engineering Services Manager in Public Works. Um, City Recorder's Office, could you please launch the PowerPoint? Awesome. And you can go ahead and jump to the next slide. Great. So the purpose of this work session is to share look aheads of the planning and transportation planning division work programs. But also to illustrate how planning and transportation planning work together across divisions and also across departments with the engineering group. As we look hard at staff capacity, core services and priority work over the next few years. It's important to consider how work led by one team depends on support and participation from other teams to be successful. Of course, the collaboration doesn't end with these three groups. We all depend on colleagues from across the city. But engineering participation is particularly important to many efforts in the planning and transportation planning work plans. So it makes sense to highlight it. This presentation, we will spend a little time talking about the work of each division individually. And then walk through three examples of that collaboration as case studies to illustrate the roles. Followed by a look ahead to the work programs from planning and transportation planning divisions. Questions and comments are welcomes and we have some prompts uh for discussion at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. The core responsibilities of planning division are to conduct planning studies and policy work that shape the future of land use and development in Beaverton. And also to apply panel plans and policies embodied in regulations that govern the land use process uh with development applications. Planning also works closely with colleagues at service provider agencies, at Washington County. And jurisdictions across the region on development and land use planning matters. Jean?
Great, thank you, Anna. So let's go to the next slide. So the Transportation Planning Division has core responsibilities across policies, plans and projects. We're the city's transportation policy lead and we're responsible for our major guiding document, the Transportation System Plan. Which is our twenty year blueprint for transportation investments in Beaverton. Uh, we're also the lead staff in several key downtown transportation projects currently underway. You know these well. This is um the Loop. And the Milliken Way Extension Project. Um, we also just frequently consult with staff in CDD and Public Works. As transportation experts. Um, and we also collaborate with our partners across the region on transportation planning. Policies, projects and funding. Um, and then we also staff the bicycle advisory committee. Um, so I think uh as you've you've heard Anna say, and I'll say as well, our work is really highly collaborative, um, both internally across departments and externally with our community. Sambo?
Thanks, Jean. Uh, next slide, please. The interim division supports the maintenance, replacement and expansion of multiple city infrastructures such as. Traffic, street lighting, sanitary sewer, storm drainage, potable and non potable water systems. Much of this is done through project management, engineering, design, surveying and administrative services of projects outlining the city's capital improvement plan. Also part of supporting our infrastructure is providing technical assistance to divisions like planning and transportation planning. Example of this is the technical review provided by our transportation engineering group during development review, providing recommendations to ensure proposals meet technical requirements. Okay, Anna?
Next slide, please. In a moment, we'll dive into the three case studies that illustrate our collaborative efforts. This slide highlights some of the context of these collaborations. Like other staff teams in Beaverton, there is more work on the table for us than existing staff resources can really realistically handle. We manage this by continually triaging the highest priority work in consultation with department and citywide leadership. The way this affects collaboration across the teams is to require both the project schedules and staff assignments to be frequently adjusted. Sometimes the lack of key subject matter expert input can slow a project down. Or prompt reorganization of the schedule of that work. And sometimes. We have to pull resources away from one project in order to advance another effort. As you can imagine, balancing this across multiple divisions and departments that have different individual priorities can take some negotiation. And sometimes there are tensions around which efforts claim the attention of staff at a particular time. Next slide, please. So the first case study will be familiar to council, the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. This slide lays out the different roles that we play in the project. As the overall project lead, planning is responsible for the scope, schedule and budget for the project. Supervision of the consultant team and grant management, project administration. And the bulk of the technical project work that's being done in-house by city staff. Engineering leads the companion Cooper Mountain Utility Plan. And contributes a lot of subject matter expertise from several different technical specialties as part of the planning process. Transportation planning is a big part of the project since it's planning um for the complete infrastructure for new neighborhoods. And the Transportation Planning Division supports that work, particularly coordination with Washington County Transportation Planning Staff. Sambo?
Okay, next slide, please. The second case study is land use application review. While this is a core responsibility for plant for the planning division to ensure state mandates are met. This is an example of how other divisions can assist one another in a key task. Planning is the main customer service contact coordinating with with divisions like engineering on the potential technical issues or impacts associated with proposed development. And like the Cooper Mountain Plan case study, support of the land use application review requires assistance from multiple subject matter experts, including not just. Engineering, but our operation division in public works that in many cases will take over the operation. And maintenance of newly constructed public facilities from these developments. Jean?
Right, let's go to the next slide. Great. And um so our third case study is the Milliken Way Extension Project. Um, this is a project that transportation planning is leading uh with core responsibilities of project management and administration. Um, we oversee the work of our consultant team and we're also responsible for leading that community engagement. Um, delivering this project also benefits from and really needs the input and expertise of our colleagues in planning and engineering. Um, they bring that technical expertise during the planning phase and then each has a key role later on. As we move um uh this project from design and into construction, the planning division processes the land use application as we move. Um, the the land use application is part of the permitting process. Uh, and the engineering division will review and improve and approve those construction plans and then manage the construction process. Go to Anna in the next slide.
Now, moving into uh reviews of the work programs of the divisions. This slide addresses the planning division work program for the next fiscal year. And on the next slide, there's a table that covers fiscal year twenty five to twenty eight. So in fiscal year twenty four, as always, processing land use applications will absorb the majority of playing division staff time. The two other major priorities for the year will be wrapping up the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. And transitioning to implementation, which we're already kind of doing overlaps, um, as well as launching the new electronic permitting system. Go live uh for that new system is coming later this spring. But the system will continue to be tailored to fit our needs for at least a year. And business processes will need to be adjusted as staff and customers adapt to this new technology tool. Other efforts may be less demanding in terms of total staff time. But are still crucial for the progress of efforts led by other divisions and the continued good functioning of the land use process. I do want to um uh share a few notes on tree code updates, which I know are of particular interest to council. Um, to respond to the desire to make updates earlier than a comprehensive citywide tree code overhaul could deliver them. Uh, staff will be reviewing the progress on the Cooper Mountain Tree and Natural Areas Policy Work that's underway right now. To see uh what opportunities we can identify for early actions that could be taken to reflect policy direction that we're receiving from council. That are part of that Cooper work. We understand the sense of urgency. And we want to provide solid advice to decision makers on those options that. Consider impacts on multiple policy goals, such as those related to housing and transportation and that and that really. Really tries to steer away from unintended consequences. Um, it's a delicate balance, so we'll be having more conversations on this, but I know this has been something that you've been thinking about, so I wanted to address it. Next slide, please. So looking further ahead through fiscal year twenty eight, this table shows major anticipated work for planning division. It's not exhaustive. It doesn't show the ongoing land use application review work. Um, but the work that's shown is roughly estimated to be doable with current playing division staff resources. With a provision of some funding for consultant services for some projects. Work programs are truly living documents that need to be regularly updated. Additional work that may need to be accommodated by amending the work program includes potential new mandates that come down from the state or metro. And intergovernmental work with regional partners such as Washington County or Hillsborough. That would be in Beaverton's best interest to participate in. Uh, and of course, other policy priorities can always emerge, dot, dot, dot. Over to Eugene.
Great, thanks, Anna. Um, so for transportation planning, looking ahead to the next fiscal year. Uh, we're leading a significant body of work with our small team of four. Uh, and again, our our work plan for next year is can be sort of organized into four core areas of activities. Uh, we'll continue our work on active capital projects, the Loop, Milliken Way. Canyon Road, and we'll also see work on the downtown quiet zones startup. Um, we're also about to embark on a major policy project. Uh, our TSP update is just a significant body of work that will be a three year project. And uh through that effort, we'll also be bringing the work of our complete streets design manual forward into the TSP. Um, as we look to update our transportation policies and street classifications. Um, another um uh important but small portion of our staff time is focused on programs and activities. You'll see here listed, there's an emphasis on bicycle transportation. And then uh finally, our staff are active participants in regional projects. These are projects like um Metro and Trimitz TV Highway Bus Rapid Transit Project. The West Side Multimodal Improvement Study, the Regional Transportation Plan. And then um also standing committees that we participate in, including the Washington County Coordinating Committee. Transportation Advisory Committee, um, and the Regional Transportation Policy Advisory Committee. Um, I think it's just important to note that the time that we spend at the regional table is a really important investment for Beaverton. As one of the largest cities in the region, we really do have an important role to play. Um, it's where um regional policy is made, um, funding decisions are made. Um, so again, sort of important, important um part of our existence in the transportation world, right? Um, so uh with this, with our existing staffing levels, um, this full transportation planning work program. Um, really isn't achievable in the timeframe proposed. Um, there's options to address that, um, to address our capacity. Those include things like contracting out services, um, adding more staff resources or eliminating causing or slowing work. Um, each of these options have trade offs and additional financial impacts to consider. And um really here, we're looking at um uh conversations for later. The city manager can propose some operational solutions. Um, you know, with councils feedback to address these considerations as part of um next year's budget process. Let's go to the next slide. Um, I have a similar table to Anna's. Um, so with our look ahead for project work after next fiscal year, you'll see these projects I mentioned earlier. Um, really, a- almost all of our projects and plans are multi year activities that continue for several years. Um, some of these projects like the Loop, the Downtown Quiet Zones and Allen Boulevard, they also need additional. they also need additional funding for design and construction. Some of these are really at sort of just beginning. We've had recent successes in securing competitive grants, and we're continuing to keep our eyes peeled for them. So as funding is secured for additional phases, work on those projects will continue. You'll also see a new project listed here, the Allen Boulevard Complete Street that's been added to the list. Some of you will recall that last year, the city was successful in securing five hundred thousand dollars in regional flexible funds from Metro. These funds become available in fall of twenty twenty-four, so we can begin planning for multimodal safety investments on Allen Boulevard. Next, let's go to Sambo.
Next slide, please. Thank you. So while the focus of tonight's work session is the work plans for Planning and Transportation Planning Divisions, we want to take a quick overview of engineering's work plan. The bulk of the work for engineering staff are the projects outlined in the city's capital improvement plan. Each year, our division presents the council a new CIP outlining the work for the next fiscal year during budget discussions in the spring, which this year includes the CIP prioritization process. Currently, we have fifty-six active projects allocated to our engineers and supporting staff. Other tasks for our division includes partner agency coordination, development review, and technical support to other city departments and divisions. Next slide. So what does technical support look like? For CDD, it falls under these general areas. For development process, we talked a bit with a case study slide about engineering's technical role in land use review of development applications. Engineering also works closely with planning on all annexations regarding the impacts of the city's infrastructure systems from new areas being brought in. There are major planning policy projects in which engineering provides staff resources to provide subject matter expert on these projects related to utilities and transportation. During the infrastructure project planning is a point the engineer staff is part of the planning and design phases since engineering staff will manage the construction of these projects. And as a city tries to provide cohesive approach to serving our customers, business process changes being worked on by community development, such as the new electronic permitting system, requires that the divisions like engineering incorporate these processes. Like I said, while engineering staff spends a bulk of our time on CIP projects, here's quite a bit of collaborating going on between our divisions, as you can see. Next slide. And as Anna and Jean has shown in their previous slides, both the Planning Division and Transportation Division have extensive work plans, some of which require engineering division resources. The Engineering Division supports these projects, but with engineer staff allocated to many CIP projects, there may be some tough discussions on how to prioritize these projects. As council further discusses the work plans for these divisions, it will be important to understand the strengths on existing staff resources and consider rebalancing priorities and managing expectations. Next slide. So with the information provided to council tonight, there are two questions we would like to discuss. One, does council have questions about how Planning Division, Transportation Planning Division, and Engineering Division work together? And does council have any questions or comments about the work program approaches presented today?
Okay, I guess I'll take a stab at it. I would just say, as you were talking, I was a bit confused on like why this is coming to us when we just set our priorities and kind of feel like the city manager should have, this is more in the city manager realm. And so I don't know like where council, like from a policy standpoint, should be having input here when we're setting the direction and it's the city manager's job to come back with execution. I just want to make sure that like my comments are appropriate for what's being asked, city manager.
So Mayor, this was an item that was asked a while back that we're trying to wrap up. It's informational based and really just to add a glance of what the next kind of five years are on the horizon. Many of these are also consistent with your goals. This isn't introducing anything new. It's just kind of understanding what the pace of work and workload is for staff and really just getting any feedback on any of the projects that are currently listed here and the estimated timeframe. This will run through the budget process, as you know, and the pace will be adjusted based on available resources. But again, this is just really kind of more of an educational opportunity for the council and something that was requested last year.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, I don't want to rack and stack projects ahead of the budget. I think all of what we're doing here is incredibly important. I do think the emphasis on cross-departmental collaboration is we're starting to see it a lot more and more under Jenny's leadership than we've seen in the past. And so for me, just really thinking about, you know, how engineering is working with planning, the projects we're doing, the outcome, I mean, I think all of it's important for us to know. I almost wish this came before our council retreat because I think the information in it is really good. It's also important to know how small the teams are in the workload we're doing. Of course, I want the loop. I want all the transportation. I want all the stuff. And I want to echo Jean's comment on how important it is for us to be at the regional table because we got to be at the table, not on the table. And so much of our input is taken into consideration because we're a big, we're a big city in the metro area, and so people listen a little bit more intently to what we have to say. And some of that work really leads towards projects coming in our direction like Allen Boulevard and other things. So I would say I just overall appreciate the work that you guys are doing. I understand the small teams and the council has a majority of our focus in these areas. Counselor Teeter?
Yeah, thank you all. I've got a lot of respect for you three and your teams because you're carrying a lot of weight of our priorities, like Mayor said. So I just want to affirm that, and you all are doing great work. I also want to ask, is there an area where you all feel like there might be some wiggle room with the amount of time that we invest on a specific section of, a specific portion of a project? I'm thinking specifically of community engagement. Is that, do we sometimes, do we might, I'm going to restart. I sometimes feel like we might invest so much time in community engagement that we receive comments that we've already received many times throughout the course of a project. And I'm wondering if there might be a way that we can shorten community engagement processes within some of these projects to lighten staff loads and maybe make planning processes more efficient.
I am happy to respond and then let Jean and Sambo chime in as well. I think there are kind of two main answers to your question. One of them is that we do look for opportunities to get a lot out of the conversations that we have with community members. The inclusive housing cohort is actually a really good example of that, rather than having a separate community group that's consulted on housing topics for separate studies. We go to the same people and we share that information. And the presentation that you had from Jenna and Javier really kind of illustrates the value of that approach. But it is true that recognizing that doing good quality and appropriately scaled community engagement is really important. And sometimes we have to work through a little bit what that will mean for a particular effort. And, you know, I think that when it comes to big questions for Beaverton's Diversity Equity Inclusion Plan, for example, we are setting a high bar and also working to understand what it really means to apply that for a different work. So I think it's a work in progress, but I appreciate the question about not discounting community engagement, but making sure that we're really valuing people's time, making sure that it's effective and really calibrated to the work that we're doing in a meaningful way.
Yeah. I'll add for counselors, for those of you who might not know, there is a team within city staff called the Downtown Team, and it's like thirty staff from different departments who come and meet together once a month or so and talk about projects that they're all working on. And it's kind of a good example of how they can all see where they're doing community engagement and where they can overlap and kind of share community outreach. And that's a good example of the sort of work that I'm thinking of where we don't need to reach out to the same people five times in six months if we can reach out to them once or twice for a whole bunch of different projects. I think you are doing great work, and I just want to help make it flow and support it as best as I can.
Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. I was like ferociously, like there's a PowerPoint, so I was trying to get caught up on both because I'm trying to read the agenda bill and the PowerPoint. I think we hear you loud and clear. We've got a lot of memories and we know that a lot of them are falling on you, and we appreciate the work that you're doing. I am curious, and I apologize if this opens up a bit of a Pandora's box, but I want to open it up because someone was really pushing me today to talk about more of our transportation, like transportation stuff, like speed limit and that kind of thing. Does that live somewhere else? Like just help me understand. And because I'm seasoned, I feel like if I don't know the answer, I'm hoping at least like two other people don't know the answer, and you're not just educating me, you're educating the whole council.
Sure, I'll start, and then Sambo, you can chime in as well. Without knowing the details of what this person was asking you, I think though, if you think about the work of my division as policy lead, right, and framing that larger context for what our aspirations are and, you know, what's the vision we have for our transportation future? The, you know, if you're talking about a specific street with a specific speed zone that someone wants changed, that's where transportation engineering has the lead role in implementing those sorts of changes on our street. So there's sort of the policy piece, and then there's the action piece. But sometimes we talk about those things across, across the floor, right? And each of us sort of informs the other. So if that helps, gives you a framework, Sambo, I don't know if that's a good way to, how I explained it.
Yeah, that's a great description. I mean, we do have aspects of the implementation through our traffic calming programs and such.
Okay. And I only bring, and I only bring it up, and I'm sure, I mean, sure others have heard, like there is a real desire to help us kind of look at more traffic calming and how we're trying to today make sure that, you know, roads and whatever is built so that we are having less accidents and or pedestrian deaths. So there's just been this huge push around that that I have been fortunate to hear from a lot of folks. So I understand that maybe that's not in this body of work, but I definitely want to just prime that out there for you that there is a really big appetite from our community that's talking about getting ahead of traffic calming. Thank you for this work. I don't know that there's any specific feedback that you want aside from keep on keeping on.
Thank you.
Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, I'm hearing a theme here, and I've already eliminated a few of my questions based on what Counselor Teeter and Counselor Hassan have asked. But essentially, I think one thing that I'm curious about, and I don't think we need to answer it tonight, is like the timelines that we often see are multi-years, and I, as I get more exposed to this work, I understand more of why that goes into. But the first question I have is how much of that is process? And how much specifically is process implemented by this council's requirements? Right? Like, I think Counselor Teeter mentioned public outreach and things like that, like, you know, are there, are there things we could do to speed up some of this stuff that, that, from a process perspective, I guess? You know, from, do we do more than is legally required? In some, you know, some aspects, is that a policy that we should talk about at some point? I guess that's my first question. And that's leading to, for me, and this kind of goes to Counselor Hassan's point, I wonder if there's an argument to be made to keep like a reserve capacity amongst your teams, you know, maybe a small amount in order for us to tackle some of these safety issues quicker, right? Like we've seen a number of pedestrian issues in Central Beaverton. We've seen community members pleading with us for barrows for a number of things. And like the challenge is those things are going to take a long time. And but are there, are there things we can do to speed that up? Or in part, you know, my question is ultimately, can we, can we reserve some capacity for you to, you all to be able to address that? You know, without adding, you know, a hundred, a hundred and thirty percent of your workload, right? Like we, that's not sustainable long term. So from a process perspective, that would be my second question is like, is there extra capacity we should build in for particularly timely safety requests? Hopefully that makes sense.
I'm happy to tackle the question about process. And I think I might defer to Jenny on your second question about keeping some staff capacity in reserve. So there are kind of two pieces to the process question, right? A lot of the project work that we're doing includes project planning, procurement of consultant resources. It includes community engagement, research and analysis. There is conversations that we have with decision makers. We come back, for example, in the Cooper Mountain Community Plan, we've had several conversations with council, with Planning Commission. And, and, and then we have the identification of options. We have assessing those options. We get feedback on those. There is an iterative, there is an iterative character to a lot of projects that include policy, right? We want to make sure that it's informed by data and good information. We want to make sure that we're exploring and identifying options for council consideration that are well-defined and robust and that there's opportunities for decision makers to guide the process. And so that, could we do things faster? Well, if we're asking smaller questions, we can do them faster, but then there's lots of questions we don't get to explore. So it is tricky. In terms of procedure, in terms of, say, making an amendment to the Development Code, Beaverton does not have a process that is longer than state law requires in terms of that actual adoption. State law has minimum periods of time for things like providing notice to the state itself, to Metro, to, to the community via posting on the website and direct mailings. We don't do extra things for that process. I think with the exception of holding a public hearing for adoption of ordinances, which is not required by the state, but that the Beaverton City Charter introduced a requirement for, I don't know that that really necessarily adds a ton of time because council has to adopt an ordinance anyway, and that happens at a council meeting, and we can actually hold the hearing at the same meeting that the vote happened. So that may or may not add time to that adoption process. And, you know, I think that we, given all the things that we have on our lists, we are always looking for ways to, to get more done. And it's, it's sometimes easier said than done. We do what we can to squeeze a lot out of the resources that we have at our disposal, but still do really quality work. So there's a tension there because of the urgency around, not just from council or the community or state mandates, but honestly from staff, we want to get things done. And so we are focused on making progress, but there's a lot of work that has to go on in order to, in order to reach the, reach those goalposts.
No, that makes total sense. I just want to make sure there was nothing that historically was intended, you know, with the best of intentions, but that is kind of adding, you know, layers of work that we could maybe look at. But if it's just like a capacity thing and we're not sort of an outlier, I think that makes perfect sense, and thank you for that. And I think we're going to go to Jenny for the second question about the capacity.
Yeah, building capacity is challenging if your eyes are bigger than your stomach. And so what we're trying to do through this process this year on budget is really align our resources with what clearly the absolute priorities need to be. And so first thing is the things that are required for us to do by law, and then we really have to be intentional about the really important work of, and that's really your priorities, counsel, of what you drive us to do in narrowing that focus so that we can build bandwidth, if you will, to be quick and nimble and pivot, right, to those things that come up. But I do want to keep, have council keep in mind that doing the work and planning for your work is one thing, but acquiring materials, resources is another thing. And then also the requirements like, hey, you want to do some type of special safety item? Well, there might be a study required before you can put any kind of flashing lights up. So there is, there is some required process too that can interfere with our ability to be nimble, but we want to be able to respond and get things in motion. So that's going to take some discipline. And so we're going to take those first steps, this budget process, try to narrow the scope of our focus this year. So this will be a good exercise in doing just that, Counselor Duggar.
Yeah, I think that's going to be really critical. And please tell me, and I think the council would want to know too, like specific ask as we, as we dig into that, those processes, if there's resources needed to like really get into that. Because I know Counselor Teeter and I have talked, like, like safety is like something we hear about a lot, like from the community. It is right up there with housing and affordability and a number of It is right up there with housing and affordability and a number of different things that and the reality is we don't know what we don't know, right? Like, like Barrows happened in the last year, Farmington, a number of other things that just we didn't plan for because we didn't know they were, you know, that we didn't know they were specifically burning issues. And there's probably a lot more of them out there. And I just want to make sure that whenever the community reaches out to us and there's there's clearly an issue that we can respond to them in a meaningful way. So whatever that takes from a process perspective and supporting the staff and your work, I'm on board. That's a real high priority for me. Thank you.
Well, I think it's also important to know, you know, the state has mandates on top of us for community engagement and it's really been an overemphasis on that. Not just here, but in land use and other areas. And there's a lot of talk at the state level on like, how do we reprioritize? Because community outreach takes a lot of work, but also we don't often get what we want because it's so complex, it's hard to have an opinion on. And when we don't do the education piece and we just go out and ask questions, it adds a lot of timeline. So I do think it's something the state is looking at as well. I do think the other hard aspect is elected official and Kevin, Counselor Teeter was with me on Barrows Road is when you have the capacity to pull a counselor's ear because you have privilege and you know how it works, we tend to run towards that because we're getting so much of it. When we wear equity hat, we might not prioritize those same projects, even though they're having a lot of community talk about it. So that's a discipline issue that the council has to get better at. It's not just listening to the loudest voice in the room. And that's the hardest part about being elected official because it's in your face constantly. But when we start putting facts to it, you know, which road is going to get traffic calming might not be the neighborhood that knows how to tell council, there's a problem. I think that's the hardest part of this workload too, is when we're interjecting in the middle of some of the projects because of what we're hearing. But how do we kind of balance that? So I do think that the outreach piece, council also put like stuff in the in the charter based off of like our past experience and the overemphasis on two counselors that were on the Planning Commission that felt the need that everything had to go to Planning Commission. That might not make sense for us in this form of government as the policymakers. We want to have opinions from the Planning Commission on some things. But the reality is we're the decision makers and what order they're coming to us and how many more meetings that adds. That's probably a next year project because I can already see Jenny starting to want to kill me in this talking here, but it's important for us because that does slow the process and what we're doing. But I don't know that we're going to be able to solve that problem this year, but you should keep it on your list for next year, Counselor Duggar, because it is a conversation that needs to stay alive. Counselor Kimmy?
Yeah, thanks for the the presentation. The I was wondering if you add housing in part of your planning work that this is all planning, transportation, engineering. But it involves people and it affects people whenever we move a road, whenever we change transportation. And just wondering how closely all you work with housing folks in all your planning. That's number one. And number two, if you, yes, I know you're doing a lot, but just wondering how intimate are you guys talking to each other? And number two is that the maybe you can answer the first question.
Sure, I actually, I'm not 100% sure what the question is. So for example, the presentation that preceded this one on the Housing Beaverton Project and Javier, who's the the housing team leader. Jenna actually is a member of the planning team. And the Housing Beaverton Project is actually led by long-range planning. She's working very collaboratively with Javier. We work very closely with Javier and his team in a number of ways. So we do, we do coordinate a lot with the folks on the housing team and the Community Development Department. But I wasn't sure, it sounded like maybe you were asking a slightly different question. Was it about more how we're consulting on a community engagement dimension on transportation projects?
Right. So similar to that is that my impression is that I might be totally off is that we give them information, we tell them this is how it's going to be, but we don't really educate them that how it's going to affect their lives potentially. That it's got to be, it comes to the transparent issue where we have to tell them how it's going to impact potentially of their lives and the economic factor and housing factor and and then and those things I think should be more talked about. The reason that I say is that when we were building a public safety building, police station, that there was no community engagement there and everything had to move on quickly, I do understand. But just if things are happening quickly, maybe there's going to be some way that we can engage the community and let them know. And then there was a lot of promises when he was first building, but then he never came to fruition in a sense that I I remember distinctively the conversation about having a public safety building, one of the meeting rooms available for public. And right now it's not available because regards to safety concerns. So but this was promised when it was when there was a public engagement. So these things I just wanted to be, I just, when we go out there, engage the public, that everything has to be transparent and everything has to be educational also. So not just everything good, but something might be negatively impact and so that we can get really here what they have to really say. And that's what I was going to get at. And number two is regards to transportation where do you think the safety concern is really a road issue or is it enforcement issue? Like, is it really a road problem or is it really reckless and enforcement of the law problem?
I think there's really probably a mix of both, right? Street design can really influence driver behavior, right? You know, picture your wide five-lane road, there's not a lot going on. You know, not a lot of intersections, not a lot of driveways, you know, you can move a lot quicker through there, right? And you sort of see that when you have a higher speed road. Streets that are narrower, that have a lot more activity and turning movements, those sorts of streets that have sort of slower speeds. They're a very different character and they, you know, as a driver, you would most likely want to want to drive at a slower speed, right? It would feel uncomfortable to go really fast. So that's, that's sort of how design and adjacent land use really influence the street and and these are sort of the types of things we're talking about with that complete streets design work. The the enforcement side of thing really starts to address driver behavior. And, you know, there's, there's a lot to that. And, you know, our Beaverton Police Department, our Traffic Division, that's a core part of their of their mission in serving the community is really providing enforcement as another sort of I'll call it a safety measure because I'm not coming up with another word in the moment. So they, 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 there are two very specific functions. But they influence, you know, they influence each other in ways. I don't know if that's quite
We're so focused on the road, Barrows Road, for example, that maybe it's not just the road issue, maybe it is an enforcement issue that I was thinking maybe you can bring in Beaverton Police into that conversation regards to safety. And last question is, you know, that development that's happening and next to the Farmington Road, the tree, there was a tree issue. What's what's going on in there? Just a question.
You mean where at the intersection of Farmington and Lombard where the two big oak trees were removed?
Yeah.
So that is a, that is a development of a mixed-use residential and commercial building. I can't remember the exact number of homes that will be created off the top of my head, but I believe it's upwards of 300 apartments. So that, that, that is a development that is, that is just just beginning the construction process. But I can get back to you with more specific information about that project.
Yeah, just yeah, yeah, maybe you can get back to me separately. Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
Can we have Cheryl call Counselor Kimmy tomorrow? Because she's the one that has that information.
I'd be happy to.
Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, I think like wait, like me between between your beds right now. Couple of things, well, two things to Mayor Beatty's point, like this is not related to this discussion, but this idea of like transportation, like the loudest people, like thinking about what ways we can better identify how we're going after transportation safety issues that are at that equity level. So just I look forward to when and whenever that conversation can come before us because it is something that we're hearing about from our community. I don't know if this helps, but I'm thinking of Counselor Duggar's comments, like if one of these projects could use a subcommittee, if Jenny believes that that is a good mechanism to support and to help. We are very new group here. And so if it helps to have subject matter expertise on specific things and the council feels comfortable with that as an idea, I do think it's something that is worth us considering. And just like as an example, like I'm looking at like citywide tree code. And if, if, if there is a benefit from having a subcommittee helping advise staff, if there isn't, just pretend like I never said it. I'm just bringing that up because I think for me as a newer counselor, when I was on the transportation subcommittee, it what I had to go from here to here and I was able to because of the exposure that I had to that. And I don't know how different counselors will feel about different topics. So just something for you to think about in terms of like helping have support and guidance from counselors. Obviously, we would have to you know, come up with who the subcommittee is and identify the right people. And, you know, Jenny, we would all want to support it, but it's just one mechanism that we could continue consider using to help us move some of these projects along.
I'll just chime in real quick because equity has come up a few times tonight. Something to just keep in mind with regard to, I can't remember who made the comments around privilege, who gets to speak up, who we're not hearing from as in how we make those transportation decisions. We're going to have a lot of conversation around that with our TSP update. Both just from a sort of a Beaverton sort of policy direction that as staff, we really see how important that DEI work is and how that informs your decision-making. And we're going to be bringing that forward. It also is work that's required through the new climate-friendly and equitable communities rulemaking that happened last year. We are just thrilled to be able to be one of the first communities in the state to implement a TSP update under these new rules. Equity is going to be a big part of it. Data will be a big part of it. We'll be talking about where are we investing? Where haven't we been investing? What types of investments will serve those communities, particularly those communities who might not have access to a car, might be older or living on lower incomes, those sorts of things. So there will definitely be more to come around that. And we look forward to having that conversation with all of you. So it's good to hear that that's a top of mind for all of you as you've been, more than one of you has spoken about it. So thank you.
Okay, well, this topic took a lot of interesting turns, so I appreciate you coming and chatting with us tonight. Counselor Duggar, do you have more?
Just one quick question for Jean. On that work, is, are we making sure to include people with disabilities in that lens? Because that's a really big, important, particularly around transportation. And I see a lot of opportunity for us to make, you know, I think of mobility devices and things like that beyond the ADA, beyond the minimum. I want to make sure that we're, we're really thinking that is is part of our DEI and inclusion work, right?
Yes. Oh, yes, absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you. Quick question. That's it.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else you need from council this evening? Okay, thanks for joining us tonight. We do still have council new business on the agenda. I do know we're working towards a future date to try our new agenda out, but in the spirit of that, do we have any council new business? Council President?
Um, I saw that the Pride Beaverton date was announced and last year was a lot of fun. But I think that we put a lot, well, we all say I put a lot on staff at the last minute. So I wanted to bring it up now to see if it's something that we as a council want to participate in so we can do planning a bit more in advance this time around. I believe it's the last Sunday in June. Counselor Duggar, you may know more officially. Okay. So I was just curious if that's something we're interested in doing together again this summer.
I was just sitting here wondering if you actually think it was fun since you're still dealing with your, your minor accident from last year's Pride Parade.
I did still think it was fun. Just a little
I, I like the idea of us doing a float of some sort again. I think it's, it's really important and it speaks our values. Last year, we included our senior staff in that. And so maybe there's a conversation with the city manager if we want to have more of an inclusive city float versus a council-directed one, since a lot of that material still exists, but I'm open to either. Counselor Hassan?
Oh, I just had a question. Like, are we, like, is this a cost implication? Is it just sponsoring? Like, just so I can understand what we're actually agreeing to. I support it. I want to be a part of the parade. I just want to make sure what we're committing to.
I do think there's a minor cost when it comes to the the overzealous float recreated last year, but not astronomical. The trailer and all of that, we already have. And there is I suppose a staffing cost to having someone drive the trailer, but that's not astronomical.
And that logo is fully reusable. We built it in a way that we could make sure to keep using it since there it was, you know, a specially created piece.
So, okay, well, I'll, I'll let you, Council President, talk through some options with the city manager and then just put us to work. Sounds like you're on the committee again and I nominate Counselor Duggar to join you.
Okay.
All right, all right. I, you know, I resigned from the Pride Board, so I can actually do it this year. So happy to, happy to help Ashley.
Sounds good. All right, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I'm going to close tonight's meeting. See you guys soon.